All right, CNN, it is of the hour. I'm not sure where Mr. Paul is, but as the second commander, I'll take over if he appears. Commencing with Doc.
The chair and members of the committee, I have been informed in advance of the meeting that Representative Braun would not be able to be present. He does wish I could be.
Other than that, we've got attendance at full, I guess, right?
Not aware of your chat or the chair are not able to join us at some point.
Okay. All right, with CNN said, let's have a call to order. We've got seven folks. Let's see, Secretary's report, yes.
The chairman, I review the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of number 14, and I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
I have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any comment? Seeing here are none, I'll call for a vote. Are you ready to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Treasury report, misorder.
Yes, we received the Treasury report with the packet, the Treasury report as of November 30th, we have a cash balance of $7,248,235.67. $6,55,281.04 was from local funds and project funds, total of $1,572,946.3. Of particular note, you can see that we received the remaining assessments during the month of November. The assessment was technically due November 1st, significant number of communities paid in advance of the November 1st due date, and the remainder were paid in November. It did get three payroll warrants during the month of November, so you can see the payroll amount there is slightly up in comparison to past months. And the transfer that was voted at our previous meeting is reflected here showing the $500,000 for the movement of the certificated free cash to the project fund. Any questions?
Make a motion to accept.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing here are none, ask for a vote. Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Saying so move, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I thought it might just be interesting to note that we did have the student activity training that we had been communicating to the board, and that went on since the last meeting. Anthony was there, as well as several members from Anthony's staff and the business office and myself. The training went very well. I think Anthony would agree. Anthony did a great job introducing the training to the group. I think it was very positively received by everybody in attendance. And of particular note, I think the committee would be interested to know that he was somewhat surprised that that was our first full student activity audit under the new rules and that our comments were so minor in nature. So he focused mostly on procedures and specific techniques on how he could increase or improve the controls in some of our procedures. So overall, I think it was very positive and very well received.
Just that it was, he was effective, I believe. It is encouraging to find an outside view when you're used to working within, and it was nice to hear his complimentary. I think we were far more comfortable of ourselves than our outside agent. So again, to echo what you said, I think it's beneficial for the staff that we had there, about 14 or 15 of us or so.
And the price was reasonable. It was only $1,000.
Yeah.
And was able to negotiate a reduced price. If we had paid for this and went to one of the seminars, it would be $150. We save money by having him come in house and specify the training towards us.
Just a question, if I may. Is this something, Barbara, that would be Anthony, that would be an annual event? Or is this just a one-time audit that they do periodically?
Well, he, this wasn't an audit. He was there basically as an expert in the field of student activity funding and practices. We hired him essentially as a consultant to review our audit and to give us the professional development which felt was needed to make corrections and make changes. On that, having gone through it, it was relatively minor in the scope of what we need to adjust. But I don't envision that we'll be having him in annually. I don't know that that's necessary. I think periodically, particularly as players change.
Yep.
People change roles, things like that. It would be advantageous to have him in. And I think that overall, he left us in good standing in terms of people's awareness and skills of what they need to do, so that on our next audit, we don't have any problems.
It's three years.
Right.
So we only get audited every three years.
Correct.
And on the two years, they're supposed to do self-audits.
Okay.
So he also talked about how we would go about doing that, so.
Good. Sounds like a good exercise.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to go to the student recognition, Doc Fitz.
Yes, the chair and members of the committee, as the minutes reflect, and the committee members will recall, at the last school committee meeting, we recognized Nolan Ballard of Upton in construction technology, Thomas Buckley of Hope Dale in electronics and engineering technology, Daniel McDonald of Graff in informational technology, for earning special distinction relative to the national merit accommodation list. But Abigail Cook joins us this evening. Abigail, please come up. Abigail is from Blackstone. Our Blackstone rep is right here to my left. And Abigail, congratulations. I generally invite Assistant Superintendent Principal Steele to join me on these presentations, because we're particularly proud of the way the students set a pace for others to follow. But Abigail's recognition includes the fact she scored among the top 50,000 of 1.5 million competitors that took the PSATs this fall, and it's a direct result of her commitment to academics and her high-quality integration academic and career work. We're delighted your family members could join us, and on behalf of Mrs. Steele, myself, congratulations. We also have some additional recognitions this evening. We have individuals who scored a perfect score of 600 in the Project Lead the Way end-of-the-course exam, which is certainly a rigorous activity. The first recipient of that is Madison Gannon of Luxbridge in Engineering Robotics. Madison, please come forward. I'd like to point out, it's difficult, but no surprise, we have two members of the instructional team that join us tonight in the audience, and they're proud of their students. But it's not uncommon for Mrs. Steele and myself to see these individuals at other functions of course of honors and other recognitions because of their commitment to the students and personnel. We also invite Grant Van Dyke of Blackstone Engineering Robotics to come forward, also be recognized for a perfect score in the Project Lead the Way end-of-the-year exam.
Congratulations.
On behalf of Mr. Steele, myself, and the school committee, and delighted family members could join us, congratulations.
All right, I may ask, Mr. Connors, how common is that? Is that quite a rare occurrence?
I believe last year, we administered 157 Project Lead the Way tests, so we had three perfect scores. One student is now a freshman at WPI, so it's rare. It's rare air.
Mr. Steele, myself also recognizing Superintendent Scholar Award recipients, Brandon Ee and Daniel Walker McDonald, so for their accomplishments.
They are valedictorian and salutes orient at presence.
Right.
And we'll be honoring them at the collaborative dinner, or perhaps a lunch.
Right. Thank you very much.
All right. We have the student reps here, Logan and Isabella. I think Isabella is comfortable. All right.
Hi, guys. So this past Saturday, we did our annual holiday drive gift shopping for families within our school who can't afford gifts this holiday season. We had 18 families within our school that we supplied these gifts for, and we got the funds from donations with donation bins in each shop, and we raised about $2,400. We also started working on our state excellence book this past week, and we currently have four members of our council signed up to go to the national conference in Denver, Colorado this coming summer. Do you guys have any questions?
Anybody have any questions at all? Doc, any comments?
Just great work. I think Logan's been slowing you down, I guess.
Happy holidays. Thank you very much, rep.
Thank you.
All right. Vocational directors' report, page six.
Okay, so we'll go through a few things real quick. Program refinements, we'll start with that, and then we'll get into the freshman shop placement data, which is hot off the press. We'll discuss a few district projects that have been completed to date, and then talk about co-op. And then finally, the general advisory chair, the official board. As far as program refinements go, this is a few photos of the automotive technology enhancements that have happened. There's some new tooling in the tool room, an extension of the garage door leading into the bay. We had to add, I think, two feet to that. There's a picture of the epoxy floor that has been redone. It's, it looks phenomenal, looks just like a dealership. And then you can see the new exhaust system with the exhaust vents that are on tracks that they can move back and forth to line up with the different cars that they're working on, et cetera. And then a new base rig wall that improves safety as well, functions as a blast wall for the entire machines that are right on the other side.
And with that comes a change in curriculum, a little shift to diesel technology as well. So hence the larger door to get the bigger vehicles in, things like that, and new tooling, of course, to work on diesel vehicles. It's not a complete shift over, but it's certainly something we're adding to the curriculum in the automotive technology program.
And another round of capital skills grant money, we put that towards merging the engineering and drafting programs, and part of the instructors' SMART goals this year are to work out collaboratively how they're going to utilize the space and where they're going to put the new equipment. So they're currently working on that, but this is a few pictures of some of the equipment that we are getting or in the process of getting. So we have a brand-new object, an F-170 3D printing machine. That thing's about five feet by three by two. It's a, it's a pretty big machine. These are form-free machines by Form Labs. They are sort of resin 3D printers, so it's a new technology, a different format than what we're used to, that currently are using. Plastic that, or PLA or ABS plastic that gets melted. This is a much different process, so again, a new technology for the kids to get exposed to. This is a Creo Form. It's used in reverse engineering, so it's a handheld item that you would use to scan an object, and then it would turn it into a 3D model, so kind of working backwards. Then you can manipulate the model and then reprint it in one of the new printers. So that's, that's a really high-end machine right there. Some other machines that are coming, this is a CNC routing table, this is a laser engraver, and this is a vacuum forming machine. So again, sky's the limit. It's thought to finish in terms of design. Anything that they want to create, they can 3D print the model, put it in the machine, and then vacuum form around it. Depending on what they're designing or building, that's one of the machines that they'll now have at their disposal. And then the next slide is, these are Megatronics kits, so they're like PLC-type trainers. We have several of those coming, and that's a Skills USA competition that they've recently started to become very successful in, so we'll have an opportunity to expose more students to that training as well. This is an AC/DC training unit. We currently, or they currently teach AC/DC circuitry down there. We don't have a really good lab simulation, so now, now they will. And this is a vinyl cutting machine. So this is just a subset of some of the stuff that's coming. There's a lot more on the list, but just to give you an overview of what's happening down there, a lot of new technology.
Engineering.
Engineering and drafting area. Some of this stuff will be available, of course, it'll be available to the other programs as well, but the majority will be housed in the end of the 100.
And some of the equipment will go into painting and design, namely the engraving and CNC machines. They have a new curriculum, a lot of new technology in the industry, and with that, the sign-making business is really taking off for that shop, so they can produce pretty much any sign you can, you can think of. In fact, they've been, there've been several national articles in regards to the program that we have downstairs, namely with the equipment that they're using, how high-tech it is. Typically, it's folks that are, that have been in the industry for several years that are using it, but our students also know how to use it, so it makes them highly employable. So with that, we need to redesign the painting and design area. We have a new blueprint for the shop. We have to relocate some of the newer equipment, so it's in an area that's not going to be exposed to sanding and painting and other things, so it sort of keeps it out of harm's way. It needs special ventilation as well, so again, a little redesign of that shop is in works for the future. Just so, we're going to go back to the ACE mentoring program. We introduced this to our school and U last year. It's architectural, construction and engineering, that's what ACE stands for, and it's sponsored by the American, I mean, Associated General Contractors of Massachusetts. This year, we have 18 students that went through in construction, engineering, and drafting programs at EBT. Consiglin Construction was nice enough to let us into one of their sites in Attleboro, it's a new high school going in down there. And all you could see was dirt in some of the foundations that were in, maybe up a few feet out of the ground. But the students took their smartphones out. You would take them out, and you would put them in these little boxes, and then you would click on a QR code on a form that they had, and then you could actually walk the building virtually with these little devices on. You had to be careful, of course, you didn't want to fall into a ditch, but the students, you could see them now kind of looking around, looking up. You could see the facade of the building, you could see the neighborhood and the surrounding area. It's just amazing with the technology that's out there now, all based off of blueprints that were created in CAD, and they turn them into 3D, and then a virtual walkthrough right on the site. Here's another picture of that, so you can go out in the site with your smartphone, or you could actually fly through the building. This student has the, like a headset on with hand controls, and he was actually zooming through the building. You could see the mechanical plans, the conduits that are going through the building, the new auditoriums, pretty much anything, and it would show up on the screen, like we could see what he was doing, and then, of course, you could actually fly up through it and look at it from the sky as well. So just amazing technology. And Consiglin is actually going to help us get the software to do that here at EBT. So amazing, amazing transformation there in the architectural world.
The last, well, it's not a refinement, but a piece I mentioned is about the advanced manufacturing night school, again, as a result of the capital skills money. We've just completed tonight the second round of that, so we had 17 students this past fall. The next batch starts up January 7th. That class is also full, another 17 students. This spring, though, will be the first time that we're offering the MapWIC Level 2 exam and course. So we have roughly nine students taking the Level 2 course, and then eight students taking the Level 1 course. As far as exploratory data, a record year, I think, right?
I think so.
My short experience on this stuff, this is a pretty high number. So 312 freshman students this year, 285 of them getting their first, first-choice shop. That's, that's an extremely high number. I think historically, it's been around 80%. So this is, this is.
Highest I remember was 88%, so certainly higher than that.
The trickle-down is there as well, 17 in their second choice shop, three in their third, with only a handful of students down into the fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh choice shop. So it'll never be perfect, but this is, this is really, really, really high, so.
It was, when I came here back in the 70s, it was 100% placement, but we didn't have a choice.
You didn't have a choice, that's right. I remember picking over the summer, and they just showed up, and that's when they butchered it.
That happened to be at home, Tom.
So this is, I'm not showing up well with the lighting, but the first bar would indicate the application choice upon entry, and then the second bar, the middle bar, would be the final choice at the end of the exploratory period, and then the final choice would be limited to the number of seats available in the shop, so the actual placement of students in the program. So certain numbers you can look at, find your shops that you're most interested in there. Some of them do a wonderful job, really explaining the trade to the students and telling them what it's all about and what a career would be like, and then you'll see that career interest sort of spike. Plumbing's a great example of that. A lot of people don't really know what it is until they go and experience it, and then they'll say, hey, I think this is really, so.
And then conversely, a lot of folks picked the health services last June, but it's not all it's cracked up to be. Sometimes you don't realize there's a lot of human interaction, and it's not, like clean bedhands, things like that, so it's good for them to find out what they like and don't like. And again, ended up we had 25 students picked it first choice, and 25 students, likely we have 25 seats there, so it worked out really well.
A high, a high first-choice placement is a result of, you know, there being exactly 25 seats available and 25 students picking it, so there's, you know, not a spill over one way or the other, so that's nice. In certain cases, we did ask vocational staff to add an extra seat if it was maybe 17 first-choice students, but only 16 seats available. So they were more than accommodating, so I think that also speaks to the high, the high number of first-choice students, so.
There is some, absolutely go through their freshman year, and they enter their sophomore year. There is some movement, too, where some of their first choices become available and they can move up.
Absolutely.
That 91% could actually end up being higher in the long run, so.
Yeah, we move students all the way up until first trimester sophomore year, if there's a space available.
Right.
We want them.
Yeah, we just threw a lot of hoops to make sure they're happy.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Real quick, I know I've asked it before, because I don't know if you guys are tracking, like, how many people change their interest throughout? I mean, obviously, we see the raw data from these, but it could be 10 people have that interest, but 10 different students are the ones that choose it through exploratory leads.
Correct.
Kind of like trend on who may be going up or down.
Sure. That, that will take some digging through the mountains, but I can certainly put it in.
Yeah, we just see if there's something we can track as far as, you know, are there certain shops that are doing a good job, not just drawing the new students, but, you know, maintaining the ones that were already there.
Right.
Just raw numbers from past years, we, we've noticed 50 to 60% of the students changed their mind. They go in thinking plumbing, and then they pick auto tech or health services, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, sometimes that'll happen, just kind of if there's, you know, you may pull the trend out of it.
Right, yeah, we could certainly try.
My.
Thank you. So an update on projects. We've had over 600 requests this year between the restaurant, internal requests or HVAC, work on cars and trucks. So again, hefty amount of external requests for all of our shops, as well as internally to get things done, whether it's printing jobs or a plumbing job in the school. So the total savings, almost $120,000 at this point this year. Again, those are actual numbers. Some, just some notable shops and projects. Painting and design has been very busy. Again, I mentioned the new curriculum, and I do focus, they do the traditional painting and staining, they're actually staining the burglar in the school out in the courtyard, but they do vehicle wraps, that's the Upton police vehicle, they did a breast cancer awareness sticker on the back windows, but they could virtually wrap a whole car. And then they do banners as well, and I talked about the redesign of the shop, and part of that is room, space. They had to do the banner in the hall just, just to fit it. So if we redesigned the shop, again, it would help with that. So here's that actual banner in place for the spaghetti supper. As you can see, all sorts of signs and sign-making. Is the reenactment with Mr. Evans, of course, Corporal Evans, I'm sorry. He was promoted, I should add. Started as a field laborer, now we give him the proper grade. And then, of course, the equipment, as you can see, it's pretty cramped, but they have it now, they need to have that as part of the redesign for the new equipment. And something that we've been working on for the last two years, actually, is an agreement with the Department of Conservation and Recreation to work on the CCC camp. We did a job a couple of years ago there on some siding, and we did like a one, a one-job agreement, so that we would go put the siding on, and then we were done. So the problem is, just that one job took about six months to arrange. So we wanted something more long-term, so Curtis Johnson and myself and others worked on a long-term agreement, a three-year agreement, to do multiple jobs there. Could be wiring, could be some construction work, some window work, and some other things. There's two buildings there. This is the admin building behind us. I don't know if you've ever been to the Upton State Forest, and then there's a cottage next to it. So the plan is to work by both buildings. There's a structural problem, some of the buildings are collapsing, because they were only built to be temporary back in the depression, but they also want to rebuild them, but make them look historically intact. So you, you think you're walking into an old building, but there might be some LVLs hidden in different places to hold them up. So here's some students, we were out there the other day with DCR folks, but they're going to be working directly with Beacon Architects out of Boston. This is our drafting department, so the architect couldn't make it that day, but he plans to come here in January and work directly with the students. So he'll mark up some drawings, they'll finish them off, and they'll probably be meeting every two to three weeks a cell between the architects and our folks. Good little project for us, and it's right down the street enough. Just a little note on health services as well. They do work in the community almost every day. So up to this point, they've, they've done 1,300 hours of community service, saving up to $15,000 in the district, whether it's a blood pressure clinic for folks in a nursing home, and they also did a screening for colorblindness at a local elementary school. But they're out there three or four days a week in the community, helping out, providing services, and assisting nurses, doctors, and other places at healthcare facilities. And HVAC, the unsung heroes, of course, that's my former shop, so I always have to throw a plug in there. They, they're out in the building every day as well, even in the weather, cold, hot, whatever, that's usually when you get the calls, as a matter of fact. So students over here doing some maintenance on a, on a system, changing some filters. And most recently, we had a coil burst on our competition center unit, which is the largest HVAC unit in the building, and there were 28 leaks in the coil. So normally, you would have to try to swatch the coil out, but it would take three weeks just to get it. So they went up there with a team of students and teachers and torches, and they patched all 28 leaks and got the coil going, so we could use it through the winter. The plan is to order the coil and replace it in the spring, probably sometime in mid April, but that's, that's just some of the work that they do, and they take great pride in that, so. And we didn't even know it was down, they did it so quickly. Good stuff. And another recent job from the construction technology shop, actually two. This is the Sutton Transfer Station, they needed a new booth there to check people in. You can see the booth on the right, the red one is the old one, but it was a joint project between a student that is in the Girl Scouts, getting her equivalent of an Eagle Scout badge. This was her project. She worked directly with the construction tech program and the painting and design program to build the structure. She coordinated all the donations for materials and paint and shingles and wood, and of course, the delivery of the, of the shed itself. So that's their new shed, the Sutton Transfer Station. And St. Mark's Church in Sutton also needed a new sign, but they wanted to put some advertising on and some other things, you know, math time, things like that. So this is something I've been working on for about a year, year and a half now. Built it all in shop, they went out, Mark Fitzpatrick went out and installed it with the students, and they're very proud of their work. And P&amp;D had some, some pieces in there. And P and D had some, some pieces in there as well. Got to give them a little credit. So now moving on to COOP, we have ninety participants so far. And just to give you a frame of reference, we had ninety-five total last year. So we did some marketing and some informational sessions with parents last year so they would know more about it and not, not wonder about it, they would actually know about it in the process. So our numbers, we would imagine to be close to a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty this year based on how we're starting, which could be a record for the school. So again, just getting that information out to the students and parents seems to be helping. This is the first time we've actually tallied this up in total since August, our students have brought in, and not, this isn't the reason we want them out there to go make money. No, we, we want them out there so they're learning, but they are making money as well. Two hundred thousand dollars this year so far, you know, which is pretty good if you go into prom and class trips and things like that. Students who money, cars, transportation, insurance, all that stuff. And what's been popular too is our job connection page, which we started to have employers post their jobs on our site, that we approve them, of course. We started out with six jobs the first year and went out to about sixty jobs that are posted on a regular basis. And our students are directed there by their shop teachers and career enrichment teachers.
This is great. Our colleagues at Self-Use and Regional Tech, I mentioned to you the same point, they have an app where they're monitoring the income of the COOP students constantly. So they have like a meter.
Okay.
Which is on display and then each day that the students reach out, that the students are working, you know, they continue to show the income.
Almost like a ticker, stock ticker.
It's like a ticker tape kind of thing. And it might be interesting, I don't think it was, it did sound like it was very costly to reach out to the COOP workers, Self-Use Regional Tech and see if they'd be willing to share that, that app or whatever, that software.
Now, that sounds like a great idea.
I, I noticed outside of the kids were up there, excited about it. And it was the superintendent who woke, who shared it with me, so if there's an issue, I can use that avenue too, but it might be something else to add.
Could be a healthy competition, we don't know.
Well, that.
Some more information on the, on COOP. All of our industries have seen a boost, whether it's construction, manufacturing or service, there's been growth in all three areas for us. And in district is plenty of employment here, so over sixty percent of the jobs are right here in the valley. So it's good to see a lot of businesses doing well. And we're going to transition now to Mr. Weiner, who's our general advisory chair and has been for the last few years. Going to talk to you about advisory numbers and we also have a list that I'll circulate.
So good evening. I'd like to thank Story Stack, Vocational Directors, who gave my name and a hat for an award there from the Mass Vocational Association and it's proudly displayed on my wall now, so I appreciate the, the thought. I think Tom called me last April, right? I kind of told you about it, it was kind of a surprise. Anyway, state of the General Advisory Committee is strong, it's, we've got some breaking members, really a lot of contributions, some, some new ideas coming in, creative stuff, which is really good to see. Some of the things we've gone over, similar budgets, equipment. This is the most exciting one, having been on the committee for many, many, many years, this one can usually go three, four, or five hours at best. We've done fairly well, I think, the last few years and had some real good input and now things down rather rapidly, so what's really important and a big joke to attest to that, although we need a diesel truck, right Joe?
Yes, to go along with that diesel pool.
Anyway, Joe focused on that. But industry starts have changed at all the time, especially the construction trades, a lot of good input from the folks in the construction trade. Lot of stuff going on there, what they need to be aware of. Recruitment's been a hot item. Auto tech, auto body, machining, not, not, no change from last year, although it's, it's exciting to see some people getting involved and the number filling up, that's been good. Of course, we look at framework, work on changes and then student opportunities as well. The advisory committee, four hundred and forty-two advisory members, three hundred went to dinner, we didn't have to use the annex this time, but that was okay, we're still packed, close to nine. We have somewhere a list for approval, that's going to flow around. Okay, good, thanks. So if you could take a look at that and approve, I hope that would be great. Here's the advisory by shop, again, you can see some of the more popular dental, 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 dental is always very popular. Electrical's always good, HVAC's always good. Information technology, plumbing, we're trying to increase a little bit and auto collision a little bit as well. But all in all, not a bad representation and they actually all show up at the General Advisory Committee meeting, so with that, we've had a pretty much a full house every year. We actually have the tables set up like this and we almost take, we take up the whole square, so it's, it's good. Sometimes we have two people to reach out to. Okay, fundraising, we started many, many years ago, the fundraising for the scholarship, for the Craftsman Awards, it's come a long way because we were joking at the last meeting, come a long way from us throwing twenty bucks in to round up the number, so we had enough money to give it to everybody. We now have multiple thousands of dollars in that fund. So just to keep you folks aware that we, it is growing, we have the raffles, which I thought I was going to arrange one tonight, but obviously forgot. But we, between that, shirt sales and other things, it's actually rapidly growing. So we're actually looking at maybe increasing the amount we donate. It's not a, it's not a for-profit, it's a non-profit thing that we want to do. And with the additional shops, we've been able to keep adding, adding to that program. I think that's pretty much it that we have. Again, I don't have anything to report, like last year where we had veterinary folks a little nervous, but everybody's really, I think, focused on prioritizing what's really needed as well as the real creative ways, I think we found some creative at the last meeting, where it's the real creative ways of rather than putting things in capital, going down maybe the expense for, at a cheaper, cheaper option.
They call me the spy.
Well, it's been happening.
Because I'm on the committee.
On behalf of the entire system, I have full appreciation. The work that's done in tandem with the advisory committees and vocational quarters creates a mechanism where we have, can validate the teaching, the relevancy built into that for accreditation, for employer interactions, for the employability of our students. But the other things that contribute are identifying the necessary equipment and other software items that we target for grants. And it creates the rationales with cross-reference to industry needs that allows us to put forward compelling arguments to secure the grant money and other things we can do. So it, it has so many dividends and it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Appreciate everybody's support and, you know, that comes from the core. Anything you'd like me to convey back other than talk.
No, thank you very much for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Very important work.
I don't know if that's a vote, Mr. Johnson? I'm accepting the list.
Yeah, I'm just taking a look at it. There's a name I got fixed.
Can I fix yours?
Yeah.
So while that's still being passed around, we'll go ahead and move forward into the next segment. Apologize for being late, got caught a meeting in the night and then ran myself a little late for traffic.
I'd like to, with the committee meeting, we need to follow up on Chad Henry, they did not drink, drunk stuff, I think they wanted to do that. Again, he wishes everyone.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, facilities subcommittee report, we're going to hold the general advisory committee until that goes all the way around.
All right. I didn't make it. We met last Thursday on December twelfth and covered several items. One just wanted to note, gym floor refinishing had been completed. Snow removal update, a couple of storms, very harsh storm in the middle, we did have a couple of equipment issues. One right away was a hose on a plow that was fortunately repaired. Mr. Broschu has spares for that, that had to repair on the number, one was a leak in a transmission which sidelined that vehicle up to the very end, that was a sander and then that was filled with transmission fluid and then used, got a, got a screw in it. MSBA update, I'm going to leave that to Mr. Johnson, I see that's on his agenda. Budget, we submitted our budget at last week's budget subcommittee meeting and the overall budget is up a very minimal one point one five percent that was submitted. There was also a capital equipment request for a pickup truck slash snow plow slash all season use truck. And last but not least, I need a clarification on subcommittee members in order to meet quarrels. Is Mr. Lavin considered a committee member right now? It's just the difficulty of making sure that we have a quorum.
Yeah, you guys have, you change the hours all the time.
Yeah.
The last minute, it used to be four thirty, all of a sudden I got an email, it was four o'clock, like can't do that. They change the times.
I know you're saying that you're pulling, you know, pulling out of it, so I just want to know so that we can know what the quorum numbers are.
If I may, the, the meeting schedules of different subcommittees have impacted participation. That happened with Mr. Yitz, felt that his availability, and the same thing is right, it's happened to, you know, Mr. Lavin, so.
Which is my understanding that you were.
Yeah, I'm working on it.
Pulled out of it. And I, I just need to know what, what the status is on, so that I do know what the numbers are.
Yeah, I, if I may, I would suggest you view that as a vacancy because of the times in which the committee meets, it reflects with what Mr. Lavin scheduled. In the same manner which we adjusted the membership for the subcommittee, Mr. Yitz, a different one.
Yeah, thank you. And that's all I have.
All right. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. All right, so the first item up for bid is a little recap on the wellness fair. Annually, we do this as an in-service and this year's theme was helping, healing and harmony. So we tried to take a little bit of a different approach and do sort of a give back to the community. I've, I've given you a handout of some of the activities that we're doing and we focus, you know, on some of the fun stuff like some massage therapy, they do facials and cosmetology. We do food-related themes, we have workshops that are kind of presentation style and then we have a variety of activities. This year we did some, you'll look towards the bottom, military donations with some nice little personalized tags, words of inspiration thanking them for their service. And then a food pantry drive for two different food service pantries here in the area. And then we hit all of the Meals on Wheels recipients, five hundred and fifty throughout the valley. And we got those sent off yesterday, day before and today. I think we've got a couple left to deliver by the end of the week. So that is just something that we put together for some of the recipients because we know they don't get out very much. And I've given you a list of some of the things that we put in the bag, a little ornament, some tissues, some candy and a nice little card that we made up by the students at BBT. And it was kind of feedback off of Sharon's Christmas card to the district, which was very nice. But that just gives you an idea of some of the stuff that we do. We always have presents by our EAP, Harvard Pilgrim and Fallon Health. And, and we really try to focus on ways to help people focus back on their health and, you know, standing up in front of students to show that health and deliver lessons that we feel will benefit them in the long run. We did have this on a snow day at the beginning of the morning, so our participation was a little bit low this year, but nonetheless, we did feel like it was a success and look forward to next year. We're already going to be planning at our next meeting probably in February or March. So with that, if you've got any questions, I'll entertain them, otherwise we can move to the next item.
I'd like to point out that the wellness fair is one of the many things we do to promote kind of a positive attitude and climate that we value the wellness of all staff members. And it's been recognized by the health insurance providers and many others. So it's a great, it's, it's kind of a major science fair of its own with all the things it's done. It's not easy, but it has great results and lots of compliments. It's coordinated through the nursing program, the nutritionist, HR, Curtis's office and many other volunteers. Congratulations.
Thank you. The next item, eight point two, is a recap of the MSBA project to date for the roof replacement. I'll start off just by giving you a list of the key players at Valley Tech, Dr. Fitzpatrick, Anthony, myself, Lorna and Jimmy. And then we have already at this point had our owner's project manager assigned and the designer architect that has done through the MSBA process itself. We have no part in, in making that selection, but we already have our contracts signed. I noted those at the end of October, we had both of those initiated. And at this point, we're in the process of doing the, the specifications and estimated project cost that will be submitted to the MSBA in January for the February board meeting. At this point, we've had a kickoff meeting on October ninth, just to lay some of the ground rules, take a look at some prior projects, introduce ourselves. The design team itself has already been out as part of its existing conditions to look at the roof, any issues they might encounter. They've already documented with photos and design plans in terms of what equipment needs to be moved, some of the build out that'll have to take place with the roof replacement and just some of the general issues that they might come across as we proceed through the project. You'll notice on twelve-six, we had our first meeting where we had the project cost and at this point, just construction came in at one point three to two million. To give you context, I believe we had initially estimated around seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand for the all-in project cost, coming in around thirty dollars a square foot. Just the construction alone, as you can see, is coming in on the initial pass at fifty-six dollars and seventy-two cents a square foot. We, working with the team, us and them at our, at our meeting on twelve-six, we identified some areas where we felt like we could really cut back. And we got our second proposal on twelve-eighteen, which was this week with a formal binder. Those costs did come down and if you'll flip the page, it is one point two seven at this point. They had not incorporated all the changes that we initially discussed and we identified some additional areas that could be removed from the project costs. But at this second pass, we were at fifty-four dollars and eighty cents and that's just again on construction alone. We do feel like that's going to come down another hundred and fifty thousand dollars at a minimum, although we're trying to push them to come down further. If the all-in cost at this point is about one point six million, which is coming in at seventy dollars and forty-five a square foot, we do believe that is grossly overstated. Unfortunately, when we're dealing with design team that are trying to be conservative on estimates, they are looking at total project costs that they see in a variety of locations, even in the Boston area. And they can be as high as this number, but our experience, which we have tried to explain to them, has not yielded that result in the past. In fact, ours has been below thirty dollars a square foot all in. Their question back to us was, or maybe caution, is if we did decide to lower that to a number we felt was going to be representative of our area and costs come in higher, that we would be at a risk of losing that additional reimbursement. So not only, they would reimburse us up to the amount that we got our, our proposal in for, but if the actual cost came in more, we would lose that reimbursement and we would have to cover that ourselves. I will say this, we, I've given you some dollars that we have available at this point, seven hundred and fifteen thousand in the capital projects designated for roof repairs. That is a combination of the three hundred and sixty thousand we transferred for the sale of the trash land plus previous reimbursements from prior roof projects. We do have other funding in our general building renovation fund totaling eight hundred and thirty-four thousand. That gives us about one point five million that's available. So our project costs right now are over that. We do feel like when we reduce it to a hundred and fifty, we might come in right about at this number. We do know we have commitments against some of the capital project funds for Masculine Capital Grant, a substantial amount. But we do feel when we go to bid in April, that that cost will come down and we'll be able to repay those funds with the capital project. So at best, those funds could be. So at best, those funds could be tied up for a period of about four months until we get a better understanding of how those costs will, uh, play out in the bid process. We will, uh, as I mentioned, have the binder ready in January for a February, the thirteenth board meeting at the MSBA. Um, I know you just had, I know I just gave this out, so y'all might take a chance, uh, and, and read that right now and ask any questions, or if you feel like, um, I've given you a sufficient update, we can move to the next item.
Curtis, first of all, thank you for your department and that, the facilities, uh, for the preparation and the coordination with Masculine Capital in pursuit of the fifty-five percent reimbursement. I think it's fair that the committee might ask the treasurer for a sense of comfort with the number, uh, the need to finance the number, uh, which the liaisons, if you will, from MSBA that are part of the process, uh, recommend that we exceed what we will need, so you never run the risk of finding short of what you need, and also indicating that while the experience has been in the urban and capital to Boston, they have, um, they are conservative or cautious relative to all of their estimates, um, but obviously these are, it's moved up significantly greater than where we initially had planned, and from our central mass experience, and in the initial numbers of the committee who have seen. So I think they need some sense of comfort by the treasurer.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what I've seen also, just to echo what you are saying, is that, um, you know, we had a much larger project in the community that I work in currently, and the MSBA did push us to increase our estimates, um, when we had went out to bid, very significant savings, um, and construction costs particularly is ten million dollars less than what we had actually budgeted for. Once, once the knowns, uh, uh, once they have the budgeted, um, areas identified and the bids are complete, they will come back and they'll reduce the budget, and that's the process that, uh, we go through with the MSBA, and it's, um, it's where we, uh, first, uh, execute a project funding agreement based on preliminary numbers that is then subsequently revised once bidding is complete, and that will come down. And, you know, we always could come back to the committee if things happen, although we are the way, but I think they tend to be more conservative so that we make sure that communities are aware of the potential highs that, you know, a, a cost could be.
That is my understanding, and that's consistent with the conversations that Curtis and I have had. Uh, can you also comment to the school committee to feel greater comfort about the accelerated reimbursement pursuits once things are in place?
Oh, right, well, as we've experienced with past projects, um, you know, we're, um, very diligent about making sure monthly we, um, submit our reimbursable costs and within, um, thirty days, and it's, it's usually much less than that, it's usually two weeks, um, they then return the reimbursable piece to the district. So the, the only thing that, um, may have stopped us from doing it monthly in the past is we had exceeded the minimum amount of expenditure for reimbursement, which is ten thousand dollars. So, um, in a project of the standard two, we probably will be above the minimum each month, and we'll be able to expect a fifty-five percent reimbursement on a monthly basis regularly.
Is it anticipated that the accelerated reimbursement is driven through this project? Obviously, it's more defined. Three eight dollars may be available to assist us with the math for the capital grant pending at the state level?
It'll pay us back, right? So we're gonna be borrowing money from those capital projects?
Okay.
But I do wanna say this, the timing of the project, because it doesn't start until June, you're not gonna have a huge reimbursement by the time you get to year end, uh, and you will have the upfront cost for, um, the feasibility piece of it, which is identified here, about thirty-four thousand eight hundred. That's not big money. The bulk of this project is really going to be reimbursable to the district, uh, in the new year, um, because I think of, you know, it, it's, it's gonna take place June, July, and then when you get into August, that'll be your substantial completion. Um, I wanna say real quick, though, uh, we had a quick conversation, and you might be aware of this as well, I was not, that the MSBA has been targeting schools, and I, I think people have a tendency on the estimating side to be conservative because they don't wanna be in a position where they, um, where the district might be at risk of losing funds because it was underestimated, but they are also cautioning that some of these projects have inflated, and they want them to go back to the drawing board and bring the costs down. I, I can't imagine we're not gonna see something like that because, as we said, this is almost, well, it's, it's a more than healthy double of what we've seen. I think we came in all-in around, literally, we are looking at thirty dollars in the budget a square foot. I think we came in twenty-two or twenty-three dollars a square foot total all-in project cost with the last roof project in two thousand sixteen. Um, so we felt like conservative would go to thirty, maybe thirty-one dollars a square foot. Um, so we'll wait and see what the MSBA says.
Did I, oh, what? So they're pumping up the number and then trying to deflate it after the fact?
I think they pumped it up. I think they do that based on project, known project costs, and they use professional estimators, but we had the team sitting from Hill International that was looking at a project in Auburn, and they were really negotiating with the project, I mean, with the, uh, designer, engineer, architect, and, uh, said, no, this really needs to come down, it's not gonna be fifty-four dollars a square foot, so we pushed them to thirty-one all-in on the construction.
Yeah, so, I mean, the MSBA is like, you know, for coverage and conservative, as I know, giving a higher estimate, but then if it comes in at exactly that, they're gonna look at it and then go, wait a minute, that's too high. Or they could do that, not that they're going to do it, but they could come in and say that's too high.
They look at our prior project costs and also other projects going around, they keep running tally of that, and they're gonna say likely this is way too much.
I just wanted to see if it was actually as silly as it sounded. That's really what I was looking for.
Well, I think it's important to note, too, that in a community, a town, a city, whatever, um, you have to go to a town meeting, and it's much more complicated to get the approval, so if you get the approval at the higher number, then chances are you don't have to go back to another town meeting, and I think that that's kind of what they want to avoid, because it's always easier to go back and reduce an authorization than it is to increase an authorization once you've received it.
No, no, I, I understand that completely, it was just the, the way it sounded, it's like we wanted you to go to the higher number, but then if you come in even at exactly that, we might want us to come in and say, wait, we need to rescale it back down.
The process is they avoid speculation, they, they make the adjustments when there's a no. It's not yet a no.
But do keep in mind, the estimate is coming from the architect engineer who uses a professional estimator, that is then bound up and sent to the MSBA. When the MSBA reviews it, they're gonna be looking at data for our area, and they said they will likely come back and say, this is just grossly overstated, go back to the drawing board.
No, no, that's how, that's how I was just running examples, I could tell you.
No, basically, my question is the same, why? It's just I was confused about how big you'd be able to double.
Right.
Well, our contention might be, um, if, if, if they, if we really pushed them down to a lower number that we were comfortable with, and then the bids came in higher, we'd probably be going, what?
Right. No, no, I under, I think, I understand this, I'd make sure that you have the coverage for it, and then, uh, just wanted to make sure I understood, oh, actually.
Yeah, really.
Right, all right.
So, but, but you keep in mind, we at least went up, we were at fifty-three point five three percent on a reimbursement rate, we climbed a little bit to fifty-five, so that's good for the district and the taxpayer.
No, absolutely.
So that's a quick update, um, and we'll, we should get another bite at the apple, so to speak, once the binder is, um, redone, and we'll take a, a review of what we have already marked up, uh, to make sure that they made those changes, touch base, uh, with Hill International, make sure they're comfortable with it, see if we can drive it down a little bit more. Uh, every little bit will help for the district in this, especially where we're talking funding, because we will be tying up some of that capital project fund that is, it's really taxed for other purposes. It will be temporary at best of, we believe.
Any more questions on Mr. Curtis?
Um, the other items, we don't have any line item transfers, but we do have, uh, five donations, uh, so if somebody wants to take these one by one, eight point four eight, any takers?
I'll make the motion to accept the two thousand and three four Ranger XLT.
Second.
Motion made and second to accept the donation of two thousand and three four Ranger XLT.
Who wants the Lexus?
Can I just have a question, John? Typically, we're pretty conservative on taking donations, and it's a little bit odd to see four vehicles being approved in one meeting, any particular reason?
Well, um, I'm gonna probably ask Tom, because we had this conversation in terms of what is your inventory like?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and as we're adding more cars in, what does the outflow look like? Because we don't want to have a used car lot down in the back, obviously.
That's my question.
Um, I don't know if you had time to touch base with them for their current inventory?
I did, uh, so the, uh, the inventory is actually low right now, so everything sort of came together, low inventory, uh, curriculum calls for cars that the students, especially the freshmen, can take apart, so they need some donor vehicles, if you will, to, to come in, and, uh, they, best way to like teach the incoming freshmen and sophomores are cars to actually take that vehicle apart, inspect the brakes, measure everything, and then we dispose of the vehicles, and we're done. Um, the, the other part is, it just so happens that we have vehicles available that came in in the last month or so, um, that meet the criteria for what they're trying to do and, uh, the curriculum that they cover.
So we're not just stockpiling?
Correct, these, these, these will not be stockpiled, they'll be used by the freshmen, dissected, and measured, inspected, um, and then, um, you know, if there are parts they can use for other vehicles, or use for testing markups, things like that, they'll take the price off and use those.
And we discussed them tracking, um, you know, we should have an inventory of this at, really at the beginning of the school year to the committee, and then we can track what happened to that inventory as we add to it, and as things come up, how did it get disposed of? Because a lot of, it just gets pulled apart and put in a metal dumpster.
Well, yeah, that might be good, if something like this that comes through, and it, it just so happens, like you said, Tommy, you get four of them all at once, and the next thing you know is we're asking questions.
If it was a different time of year, we might not be taking all of these, but right now, we need them because we just got the freshmen to the shop, and they do need them.
Oh, no, great, so like a rolling in with her, that's a good idea right there, so we can track the comings and goings, not necessarily month-to-month, week-to-week, but if something like this comes up, so we know, you know, we lost two off the last and we added two this time, or right for.
All right, and then another thing you're gonna notice on all the vehicle donations is we've shied away now from giving a flat dollar value, and we are doing the condition of the vehicle and giving a range for the Kelley Blue Book, and leading that up to the donor and letting them substantiate it, because we don't want people pointing a finger at us saying that we overestimated the value of it, we just say, good condition, this is the range, and let them pick the number. They'll be on the floor.
With three dot is, Mr. Finn was hoping to make a bid.
Lexus looks pretty good.
All right, um, the motion is on the table, questions, comments, discussion on the two thousand and three four Ranger XLT. No additional questions, all those in favor of accepting this donation, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Motion carries.
Eight point four D.
I'll make a motion to accept the two thousand and one Lexus.
Motion made and second to accept the two thousand and one Lexus. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, that donation is accepted.
Eight point four C.
Letter C.
Make a motion to accept the two thousand and three Beetle, second.
Motion made, second, as it's cycling around over here. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, that donation is accepted.
Okay, eight point four D is not a vehicle, but it was a contribution of, of the noted supplies and materials to metal fabrication. Um, unfortunately, this was brought into the building in September, uh, and the audit firm for this company is pressing, uh, the company for a letter from us. Um, so I think just not being familiar with the process, uh, which I had a, a conversation with Mr. Viori, uh, of the procedures around that, that you really should be working through, Mr. Bellin, uh, I'm jingling here, um, to, uh, identify the, whatever the donated item is, make sure it is something that is going to be used by the district, and get school committee approval prior to bringing the, uh, the, uh, supplies and materials into the building. So with that, we do have this, they have been using it, and we're seeking school committees to make the move.
Motion made and second to accept these materials for eight point four D. Questions, comments, discussion?
While, while I recognize the appropriateness of the process, um, I'd like to indicate, I'm always pleased when the, when the staff members are reaching for donations of stock and other materials, and we just have to orient them a little better, or to, the best way they can comply with the process, but it, we do appreciate the outreach.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right, eight point four E.
I'll make a motion to the accept the two thousand and seven Toyota Camry.
Second.
Motion, oh, Joe breaking the road down there.
Joe, pop it in there.
No, motion of the second, questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the two thousand and seven Toyota Camry, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Merry Christmas.
I think that makes its way to the podium, we wish that the committee, uh, the board of the right.
Thank you for reminding us, that is my time.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. All right, seeing as everybody's had a chance to review the general advisory committee membership, we will go back and revisit this, as it does require a vote and approval.
I'll make the motion to accept, says president.
Motion made and second. Questions, comments, discussion? All, seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? All right, motion carries, the committee is approved. You. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Looks like the captain ate the marriage, would we be worried?
I'd probably guess so, I'd guess. Purple view there.
I know you all know Mr. Urquhart, Assistant Principal Urquhart, uh, he'll be a key presenter involved in here, and we'll get our, work our way down, uh, through, starting with nine point one, the, um, BBT Fall Sports Awards Ceremony, if you don't mind passing those around. Uh, great season for us, uh, MSB Denise did hold, uh, the award ceremony on the eighteenth of November, but, uh, Mr. Urquhart's, uh, sending around the usual, uh, program that we put out there, but some great highlights this year, uh, boys and girls cross country, they were the, uh, state vote large school champs for the girls. Four times in a row, the boys earned that title, so that's quite impressive, they have four feet there. Uh, cheerleading continues to do very well, Colleen Lattick, the champs, and second place in the vote large school championships. Girls varsity soccer had a good year, they were the state vote large school division champs, um, Cal Conference champs as well. Uh, boys soccer made it to the Central Mass Division Three, uh, and came out victorious there, uh, also state vote finalists. Golf, uh, we were the state vote champions, Colleen Athletic League champs as well. Field doggy, uh, they were the Cal, uh, league champs as well there. Girls varsity volleyball, they qualified for the Central Mass Division Three, uh, and also came out as the state vote large school finalists. So across the boards, the postseason play is the norm here, and certainly a great fall season for all of our, uh, programs. So, always provide that for you, so you can see, you know, who's coaching, who's staffing, and, uh, snatch out of, uh, another great season for it. Any questions on the Fall Sports Awards Ceremony?
Very impressive, congratulations to all players, all, all coaches and all the districts.
It's the, uh, first installment that, uh, really since could be another mark of award, I think, at the end of the year.
Don't be counting those just yet.
Hey, I don't do that, I'm just looking at the legacy there, Mr. Chairman. Uh, nine point two, parent applicant night, open house, this is the, uh, the big one, open all, uh, the public. Um, we always have all doors open, front and rear, uh, and we've streamlined the event, so we're not doing any speaking informational sessions, we found that people wanna flow freely through the building and, and basically find the shops and programs and academics that they're interested in, uh, so it's a little bit hard to get a count of exact- So it's a little bit hard to get a count of exactly how many people come through, but it looked very consistent with what we've had in the past. This is the one where we judged the marketing situation. We overflow our own lot and Nipmuck is kind enough to let us use theirs. We run shovel buses back and forth. And so shortly after the event started, we were already overflowing the Nipmuck. And that would estimate somewhere in the neighborhood of three thousand guests or so on that open house night. So it seems to be on par with how it's been in the past. As always, our programs put on a good presentation in each of their areas and are also eager to answer questions for a lot of curious students and their families. Any questions on our parent applicant night? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to nine point three. I'm going to defer to Mr. Urquhart. He is the sophomore Assistant Principal in charge of the sophomore class. And the sophomore ring ceremony is traditionally here, something that is run by the class's Assistant Principal. And it was quite especially here. So I defer to you, Mr. Urquhart. It's your show.
So actually, I'm going to pass out. If you can take one and pass one, these are lapel pins that I'm going to give to each of you. If you take one and pass one around, I am giving those to you as, and I'll talk about the purpose of those in a second. Actually, this is this year's ring ceremony and the answer for the class of two thousand twenty-two. It was actually the largest group of participants at the ceremony in the history of Valley Tech with two hundred and sixty students from their class actually participating. What we've seen over the past several years has been a decline in participation in the ceremony itself, but seeing a steady attendance at the dance. And that has been attributed to when we talked to the kids about not wanting to be recognized or the fear of crossing the stage. In our presentation and the rehearsal and the class meetings with the students, it really is talking about the purpose of the ceremony and in preparation for one of the largest events in their lives, which would be high school graduation at the Hanover Theater. It really is a replication of that ceremony and it's important that they start to prepare to be recognized as individuals, but as a part of the entire class of two thousand twenty-two. So this year, there were two hundred and sixty attendees and well over three hundred at the dance. One of the reasons why I'm bringing the lapel pins to you as a gift, it's something we felt over the last couple of years with seeing the decline in the attendance at the ceremony. We understand that many people feel that the ring or the ceremony is an antiquated ceremony and they don't really have a really strong understanding of what the ring truly means. So this year, what we did, we actually brought a few staff members who are Valley Tech graduates, who purchased a ring and participated in the ceremony when they were here and to share why they have the ring, what it truly means for them as an adult person who just doesn't work here, but as a keepsake and a positive memory that they've had here. What we felt that was important to recognize that if people don't have the means to purchase a ring or other memorabilia from Valfor, we felt that we should recognize the students in one way in working with Craig Johnson and Valfor was giving them a commemorative Bieber pin. Once they're a part of the Bieber family, it's a little token of appreciation to say, hey, we want to recognize you as individuals that is making up the class of two thousand twenty-two. So although students may not have crossed the stage and received a ring or a charm bracelet with their shops or sports or clubs, each person that did participate did receive a Bieber pin to be, you know, utilized or worn at graduation or at an event to show pride in their schools. And the kids actually were really appreciative of that, that they were being recognized and we were providing them with a small token of appreciation from the school. I thought with regards to rings, one hundred and seventy-five rings were purchased by students. I felt as though the kids who purchased them this year really understood from our staff why you get one and the meaning it has for a person in their, you know, later on in life for them and what it means, a memory for them and a good recollection of a positive experience here at school. This year, we also did charm bracelets. So Valfor has a variation. It doesn't have to be a ring. It could be other articles that they feel are, you know, something they want to have. But I thought the pin was a really nice little gesture and token for them as students. Again, once we say, once a Beaver, always a Beaver. And again, it's an opportunity for them just to have a small keepsake from their experience here as sophomores. And again, we have a great relationship with Valfor and Craig Johnson. They donated and have donated monies to their classes every year. And in lieu of the donation, they have done that, they have now donated the cost of the pin. So I think it's something we made it universal. Last year, when we started out initially, we actually had the class of two thousand twenty-one listed on them. But we felt as though universal pins were equally as important to the students. I thought the kids had a fantastic time at the Masquerade Ball and they were very thankful and appreciative of, you know, how we are recognizing them. And I know a lot of people always say, you know, asking the parents, you know, we're one of the few schools that actually continues with this tradition. I think it's very special and it's just one more example of how we recognize and feel it's important to recognize our kids for one reason or another. So I think it's a tradition that has been time honored and started by Mr. Steele and I hope it continues because it is a truly special night.
Well, actually, it was prior to me, Mr. Brennan, but I continued to take it to new heights. And it's always been a sign of, it would help, if you will, the solidarity of the class, school spirit, and likewise, the participation level. And so I always challenge Mr. Urquhart to grow it. And, you know, we had some concern when kids were losing interest in the rings. I didn't think anything to do, no, didn't have anything to do with Mr. Urquhart. But I'd say, well, figure something out, you know, let's honor them with a pin or let's do something. Let's get them out there. It's more important they come and participate in this event. And so he shattered my record. Can't believe it. Good job.
I think one of the things to highlight for the kids, when you actually talk to them in small groups or you're going through it, is really going back to the importance of being recognized and how we really had that translate to them and have them truly understand it. It wasn't just about the graduation ceremony. It was about something that they might do in their life, whether it be work, something in college that they might be recognized for and appreciated for at a place of business. And it's hard to decline someone who's recognizing you for hard work and effort. And we're trying to really prepare them for being recognized for a skill or a trait or whatever. And I thought the kids had an amazing time. And I didn't think it shattered. It just happened on its own.
You're an absolute miracle. Okay, any questions on the ring dance, sophomore ring dancing ceremony? All right, great fun. Can't wait till next year. Nine point four, Blizzard Bag Proposal. I told you last month that I would be bringing you some information on Snow Day Recovery, a pilot proposal. Mr. Bellin and Mr. Connors, I might leave those copies to active. They gave you.
I might be a little short.
I just see. Here's another one. Oh, no, there's more here. Sorry, this is a flip flop. I mean, there's a couple blanks in the pack, but here's more. So just to kind of reorient us on the conversation, Snow Day Recovery has been, it's not brand new. This is a concept that's been around a few years. We were not quick to jump on it. We don't want to be the first one to try everything, as Doc and I were talking about. We kind of sat back and watched how this played out in some other districts. Mr. Urquhart and I actually at the summer administrators conference took in a few presentations on other schools and what they had done. Be frank with you, I wasn't very impressed with the programs that we were seeing. Didn't feel like they had the accountability in them. And as I was explaining to Mr. Urquhart, I said, that would never fly with our school committee. I wouldn't even come to them with that. And that's earnest. We saw some we didn't like. And I continued to look at it. I know, for example, in the back, Mr. Bellin, Mr. Connors, I put them both on special assignments to work with the vocational staff and come up with some projects that would be meaningful and would actually equate to what we would consider high quality, you know, time and learning time on task. Likewise, Mr. Evans did that with the academic staff and really held off on bringing anything of this nature to you. And so we felt like it was something that would meet all of our expectations. And that day has come. What's interesting is Doc hands me a newspaper article a week ago where the state is considering not doing it anymore. And so they certainly have allowed school districts to do whatever they have planned to do this year. But it's a wait and see for FY twenty-one. And we actually reached out to, sent the Department of Education some email questions around it because I believe, well, let's say, I'm not convinced that that was interpreted correctly by the media that was covering it. I believe that the concern was the school districts were using it to substitute their one hundred eighty day or nine hundred ninety hour minimum. And the state is not comfortable with that. As you know, we're well in excess of that by thirteen days and it's not an issue. I think what the state is going to say, they view the extra thirteen days as a local decision. In other words, what we all decide we want to do with those thirteen days, we're well in excess of their minimal expectation. I think that's the response we're going to get back. Nonetheless, we did put a lot of work and time into the nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty proposal and was already on an agenda and scheduled to bring this in to you. And wanted to at least orient you to it and see what you thought about it and get some of your feedback and see if it's something that you want to engage in. I know that you can read. I'll just hit a few of the points on it. We were looking at a maximum of three days in consideration. And I understand we've already used three days and it's not, we're not even into January yet and we've already spent three.
Most have.
Most have, yeah. We're not, we're not unique in that. So one of the concerns I have this year particularly is that we're already at June twenty-three, will be our last day of school. And I'm pretty sure, the squirrel told me that we're not done with snow days yet this year. We're going to get a few more. That's particularly concerning when we want to start a pretty major roof project as quickly as we can. Number of factors, but we're already going to be bumping up to July one, was it Tuesday or Wednesday, I think, the last week of the month there, June. And I think if, for that reason alone, I'm very interested in this proposal. Moving on down, each term, essentially, the students would complete or we would present and they would complete one recovery day project. I thought Snow Day Recovery sounded better than Blizzard Bag. Blizzard Bag was a colloquial term that became very popular. But for sake of proposal, I'll call them Snow Day Recovery Days. They equate to two hundred and ninety-four minutes or four point nine hours each. So each of their seven courses would give them a forty, a project designed to be approximately a class period. Students are required to complete it. Staff are required to design it, grade it, and record it. As you get into some of the other areas, for example, support staff already come in, admin already come in. That wouldn't change. When you're talking about facilities, they're already coming in and doing snow removal. Mr. Johnson and I talked about the cafeteria staff and there are a few things that we would have them do on these days. They'd still come in. But we have the kids here to feed them. We would do extraordinary maintenance and cleaning. We'd also do professional development. It would be an ideal time for that. Teaching assistants are a little bit of a special case. Right now, we contract them on a daily rate per diem for one hundred and ninety-three days. What we would essentially be doing in the future is contracting them for one ninety with the possibility of, what goes on, it could go past one ninety-three. It depends on how many additional days you have. But we don't believe that's going to be a problem this year. Again, we were quite confident that we were going to have them in one ninety-three, no matter what, given that we surely will have more snow days coming. Ultimately, we aren't just paced out by the term one, term two, term three. I guess what's more significant and matterable is that they're all due by June one. And we would expect the completion by staff and students and when entered into I-PAS by June one. So that we would get to the end of June, ultimately, it's June the eighteenth was going to be our last day of school and we would start placing them in if earned. They would be impactful to the student's grade if they didn't do them, for anybody who's wondering what happens to the student who doesn't. That seemed to be a preferred model than giving them an artificial day of absence. So it would basically be impactful to the final grade if they did not complete the work. However, all the work is to be done outside of school. It is extra. It's things that can be completed in substitution for this whole day. Again, most of our sending communities are participating in this and I'm not sure what their futures are going to be or their interpretations are going to be with the Department of Ed's stance on it. Certainly, the Teachers Association is in full support of it. They actually work with us and were very encouraging in terms of putting something together. Teachers did a lot of work, I'd say, paid it forward to get something appealing in place. And that was part of the challenge too, is say, oh, look, I'm not going to the school committee until I have something that I think really represents the true substitution of the day's work for both sides of the desk, teachers and staff. And they did that. So we will get more information on what the Mass Department of Ed has in mind for FY twenty-one. But do like, you should consider allowing us to pilot it this year, see how it goes.
Do you need a vote on that?
I think we do, yeah.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made and second to pilot Snow Day Recovery.
How that I would have is that, my opinion is that the negotiations subcommittee should preview this, make a recommendation to the full committee before we go forward with implementing this for this year.
Has this been better to labor? Council? I don't know. Might in fact, we're not, other obligations that we might have under it.
We did not give this to, for example, Mark Terry. No, we did not.
Because I, because I'm in agreement. I'd like to want to make sure that like the ayes are dotted, the t's are crossed. And I know you guys are trying to come up with something, so, because.
Well, let me remind you all.
And it didn't come like.
Until the due date would be June eighteenth.
Right.
Doesn't matter this week, next week?
Yeah.
Really, if we're going to do it, it's more or less that we would, we don't want to wait till June to make a decision on it. But in other words, it's not urgent. It wouldn't be until we started actually doing, extending our calendar in June is when the payday is, right?
Yeah, no, I was going to say, I know you didn't bring this lightly. I mean, that's.
No, understood.
So is that, you know, something feels just, I, it's hard to put my finger on it, not just the contract. It's something just that I can't put my hand around it.
What about the administrative costs or the burden associated with managing this? What's that, what's involved there for the R I?
I would say virtually nothing. I mean, we've already actually done the majority of the work. We've already set up the ring books. We've already, we've already put the work in, I think is fair to say.
So it'd be easy enough to manage this with all the students and teachers?
Oh, yeah, at this point, very. Essentially, what you're looking at is a collection of assignments and projects. It's a matter of tallying them in their own column within their ring books for accountability to make sure that they got done, done satisfactorily. But administratively and managerially speaking, I think the heart part's done.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Good.
This will have a new motion. Are you willing to withdraw the motion to maybe direct this to the negotiations subcommittee for an opportunity to go further?
Sure.
Just some committee to the second.
There was a second.
Exactly.
Also withdraw.
I'll do the same, yes.
So you've just started a convenience. I think you've done a lot of homework. You're well prepared. So you've just started a convenience. I think you've done a lot of homework. You're well prepared to respond. This will include within one of the meetings that the Negotiations, School Committee Negotiations Subcommittee schedules an opportunity to probe deeper.
Sure. I'd also be happy to run it by our legal counsel, at least have him take a peek at it.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm thinking. It's just a double check in the theory. Yeah. Also, yeah, what was that? So like I said, the motion was withdrawn. Refer that was withdrawn.
Refer that for negotiation.
Refer.
We to agree to refer to the motion.
Yeah. And also a point of interest, we were not suggesting a policy change at this point. What we were suggesting was to pilot the concept. That means the assignments get created, we try this, we are able to report back with some real world experience of what it was like to do it before. And that was again, something that Teachers Association was very agreeable to do with us and to try with us.
No, no, and I appreciate the effort, having stayed home all day with an eleven-year-old with minimal schoolwork to do during the day. I, there is a lot of effort and thought that goes into something like this and I appreciate the effort to try and make it productive time. This, I'm just, I'm having trouble grappling with it right now.
No problem.
So we'd refer that off to negotiation and we'll bring you back.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you for being so accommodating with that, too.
My pleasure. Nine five is a series of out-of-state field trips. First one in your packet is nine five A. It's a ski and snowboard trip to Mount Snow in Dover, Vermont.
I'll make the motion.
Most of them, second, to approve the ski trip. Yeah, I think you're there. I know it's a Saturday, no impact on school time. Questions, comments, discussion. Saying none, hearing none. All those in favor for approving the ski trip, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. That trip is approved.
Very good. I have a special presentation for you all. Mr. Ericard is not only the sophomore class assistant principal, but also the senior class assistant principal. So a little bit more business up here tonight. Pleasure to introduce Cole Peterson to you. Cole is the president of the senior class. He's here to present as well. And of course, we have both the class advisors, Miss Jen Garrison in the back and Jessica McKenzie over here to my right. And this is their, as you know, last year, our seniors took a trip for the first time. We did an out-of-state trip. Largely due on the seniors to organize it, fundraise for it, present it to you all, present it to parents, pave the way for it to happen. And this year's class has a different idea, a different proposal, and I'll give it on the screen here for you. But Cole would like to present their idea for their senior class trip this year.
Hello, my name is Cole Peterson. As Mr. Seale said, I am the senior vice, the senior president for our class. And this year, we were, we saw what our senior class did last year in twenty nineteen, how they went to Washington D.C., Washington, D.C. And they all got a really great experience out of it. And we were looking to do something similar this year for our seniors. We have a planned trip to New York on the dates of, do you have any dates real quick for me? So it's for May eighteenth to nineteenth, which is scheduled to be our MCAS days. So that would get our seniors out of the building, which gives the opportunity for our sophomores to be taking their MCAS and they won't be disturbed during that day, those days. And actually, we're working with the same company, Education Discovery Force, which is the same company that helped us with the Washington, D.C. trip last year for our twenty nineteen seniors. And they provide, they helped us plan out all of the activities that we were doing. They provide twenty-four hour around the service for us with trip leaders and tour guides for each one of the buses that soon as we end. And their main focus is to make it educational as well for the students. And that's what, that's why we chose this company rather than other tour groups. And we work with them on planning our days out. So it's going to be a two-day trip. We plan on departing at five AM from Blackstone Valley Tech and arriving in New York around nine AM. And we have a bunch of activities planned throughout the day, particularly the guided Central Park walking tour. We're going to go to the Metropolitan Museum of Art, the American Museum of Natural History. And then a guided downtown walking tour, Times Square walking tour. And then, and I do a check into the hotel in New Jersey. We will be staying outside of the city so that the hotel cost can be less expensive. And then we, we had planned a semi-formal farewell dinner dance at the hotel, which would be kind of our send-off for our seniors. Act as our senior banquet, but we'll upload that later on.
Each one of those activities is planned out or choreographed by the company that's.
Yes.
The first four bullet items, each of those can take a whole day. It's just the museum alone can take a weekend. So they have a program figured out?
This is Jess McKenzie, one of our class advisors, and Jen Garrison, our other class advisor.
So how our class gets their own tour guide, the walking tours, everyone will participate in, but by bus, so they'll be with their group of students. And then for the two museums, each student will get to go to one of the two museums, so that we're not applying both museums at once. And we'll be deciding by bus where they'll go. They'll have to hopefully stop after the one base.
Similar to last year, it was, we, it's based on the spot, the city that we're going to, that's the difference. With this company, what we found from last year's experience with Washington is that everything, the tour guides have things down by, by time. They really do a fantastic job. I thought last year was great. I think this is another opportunity for the kids to have an educational experience while having fun with their classmates. The way they do it is when they're broken up into different groups. They, the people are experienced tour guides. They know exactly what the importance in parts of each walking tour or museum is to hit. And I think that they do a good job with timing everything out. Because I agree, Mr. Yitz, that each one of those can literally take seven to ten hours. But it's again, working with the company and talking to them, they have everything planned for us. So that the kids, I always look at, are the kids occupied and active. We know downtime never really works for kids of any age, but I think that they do a fantastic job of identifying time and interest levels for the kids.
Also, one other important factor about this slide is that the order, let's walk here, they check into the hotel after the dance.
I want to also bring up one point here, and you always try to predict what might, some of the questions may be. And so one of the things that we've talked about as senior classes have evolved over time, traditionally, the tradition for the senior class used to be going to Wright's Chicken Farm at the beginning of each school year. And then, of course, as we always do things, it's, we always listen to feedback about what parents and what students are doing in order to make modifications or changes to anything and everything we do here. I think that's a tradition we've, we've always had. We love feedback to see what we can do with regards to changes positively. I know that last year when we did our farewell dinner, some of our students might not be going on the trip by choice. And we'll talk about that in a few minutes. But I, I thought it was important for moving away from one dinner at Wright's Chicken Farm, which is great, not dismissing Wright's. But the kids never really understood why we were having it at the beginning of the year. It was a great opportunity for them to go and eat dinner, but there was really no opening or closing about like what the purpose is, what the goals are for the year. And I think what we've talked about as class, a class and class officers and advisors is really like having a purpose to the night. Now, I don't want to dismiss the fact that if kids don't go, they're kind of left out of the lurch. We are planning and we'll talk about what we're doing for the entire class at the end of the year if those students have chosen not to attend. Because again, it's about recognition, recognizing the kids as being seniors, a culminating activity as the trip is. But we also feel it's kind of like a good way to send the kids off into their post-secondary lives and whether it be in college or work. So we do have a plan for that as well, but we always, I think having a dinner and a dance is something that the kids truly enjoy doing. And it's again, it's about them, not about the adults.
And then for our second day, we have a breakfast at the hotel planned. And then we will check out at the hotel because we will not be here after around the second day. And we will do a guided tour of the Statue of Liberty in Ellis Island. And then lunch at Ellis Island. And then we will end the day with a guided walk across the Brooklyn Bridge, a tour of Chinatown in Little Italy. And they will have a chance to shop on Canal Street, which I think is a really big thing that they're looking forward to. And then we will have dinner that night at Dave and Buster's. And we have, the tour company has scheduled unlimited gaming for the kids at Dave and Buster's. So I think that would be a really, a really fun night for the kids as well. And then right before we leave, we will visit the nine eleven memorial in shopping mall across the street. And then at eight PM, we land in a park, leave New York and get back to UCD around midnight. And we will not have school for fall weekend.
So I thought it was also important to identify too, how we came across New York. And similar to last year, again, we, there was a survey monkey done with the class of twenty twenty. And New York was the top choice for the students. They felt that was the trip that they liked the most, they had the most, the higher interest level for the kids. So really, it was about finding out what they wanted to do and the class voted and New York was the selected choice. Just for note, for similar to last year, the purpose of doing it during this time, to Cole's point, is that sophomores are taking MCAS for a blocked out four-day. That's the state gives four days blocked out. They only need two for this, to administer the test because it's all done electronically. We always feel that even though there's the third day of traveling late at night, again, safety first in anything that we do here. By the time we get home with traffic and the kids, whether they have rides, because the expectation is we're not letting kids drive. We did the same thing last year where parents are required to pick them up here on campus. I don't care if they're eighteen, again, you know, tired kids means distracted driving, whatever that may be. So those kids, when they're picked up, will have the next day off because again, if they're getting back maybe even after twelve or one, it's not really in their best interest to get, you know, four or five hours of sleep when they get home and come right around to coming to school. So that would be an excuse day for the students. And we did that last year for the students going on the Washington trip.
And we will be seeing the Metropolitan Museum of Art and it has all the things that go on in our museum. And I think that that's really important because that kind of ties together the educational portion of the trip. And Robin Williams kind of says in the movie Good Will Hunting, when he's talking about the, going to see the Sistine Chapel. And when Will talks about reading all the books and you can learn a lot about everything, but until you actually go and experience and get to see this stuff in person, it doesn't really mean as much to you. And that's why I think that it's important to go to like museums and see that kind of stuff. And I think that that will really add a lot to the experience for the students.
Cole, I actually think it's great that you would know who Robin Williams is. I didn't want to miss that point, but I thought that was great.
That was good.
And then as well as the American Museum of National History, which is really exciting as well, because that's where they filmed the Night at the Museum movie, where all of the things in the museum come to life. And I think it would be cool to see all those that are actually real, real things and not, not just some movies. And then as we were talking about the senior banquet, and that could be partially replaced by our dinner dance. And it's set at a better timing to wrap up our year rather than at the beginning of the year with Wright's. And that would give the kids an experience to enjoy their night together. It will be a last kind of culminating event for our senior class. Trip pricing, so it includes the round trip to New York and back. We were taking the Deluxe motor coaches. And we were told that they have new ones this year.
Told they have Wi-Fi.
Wi-Fi. And that, this trip also includes a breakfast at the hotel and two dinners. And then one night of hotel accommodations, all admissions and taxes. And then the twenty-four hour licensed tour guides. So that's really important that we have somebody with us all the time. Even at the hotel rooms at night, there will be a security guard at each floor making sure everybody is safe and nothing's going on.
One question on the place?
Yep.
Is there a recommendation for spending money for this trip?
Keeping it light is kind of the recommendation. You never really want to carry too much cash on you when you're going on a trip. We can generate as it gets closer, a handout for students that give them guidelines. But the goal is that they be paying for their own lunch for two days, so they need enough money for that. And outside of that, it would be a choice as to how much money they have to carry if they're going to purchase souvenirs. But again, anytime you enter the city, you don't want too much cash on yourself.
And that's what I was thinking, because then, then there's not a pressure that a student feels they need to bring two hundred dollars. If you save fifty dollars, then there's no pressure on the kids trying to get more money to bring.
A lot of the students last year, we, we set about a hundred dollars in cash for, you know, breakfast or lunch. And then if kids, what a lot of the students did was they got Visa cards. Moms and dads, grandmas, grandpas got them Visa cards with X number of dollars on them. And they almost can use, if they want souvenirs, as a credit card, so to speak, so they're not having to handle cash or bring cash.
So through fundraising and all the work that we've done building our balance as a class, we are contributing a hundred and ten dollars per student based on our funding. And this number could change as well, based on the amount of participation we have for our trip. So that could be, that number could be larger. And the total cost out of pocket for each student would be three hundred and fifty dollars and that was as being paid. And I think registration is, is not at this point correct, or?
So what we're, also with regards to registering for the trip, so we have encouraged the students to register. The deadline is tomorrow. I actually sent, if you have a senior, I actually sent out another one call this evening to encourage kids to participate. Again, when we first initially proposed the trip, there was a high level of interest. What I will say about senior students as they're kind of focusing on a variation of things senior year, we always don't want to lose sight of the trip. So more reminders, again, even though they're seventeen, eighteen years old, they need quite a few reminders to make sure that they meet the deadline requirements. We have talked about looking at the numbers now, about if we need to extend the deadline, working with the company to do so. Again, the more participation, we feel we would love to have the entire class come. Several of our students have said to us that, that are on co-op currently have, similar to last year, that they'd rather work. Their families have experienced this trip before and a number of our students have wanted to stay on co-op. And again, we, it's their choice. But I think that right now prices are similar to three forty-nine and may change based on the participation of the students.
It's just unfortunate that there are payment plans in order to help people fund their trips. So it's, there, I believe there are, you can pay in four separate installments so that families aren't forced to pay for it all at once. So you can start with your initial deposit of seventy-five dollars and then I believe there's three monthly payments after that of ninety dollars a piece to finish covering the trip.
I also want to add in, because I know that there was a question last year about students who financially don't have the means. I am the District's McKinney Vento Homeless Coordinator. And so I work with the class advisors to identify students who don't have the ability but do want to participate. And we'll, we're providing the funds for those students. Because I know that did, that did come out, up last year with several students who were in need. And again, the timing of this with the deadline being around the holidays, you know, money in some families are tight. And we understand that quite well, actually.
No, I mean, I know that's a question that often gets asked, particularly especially with the international trips, so those are a little more costly.
Yep.
Do appreciate you addressing that, but thank you.
So I also thought it was important to have you recognize, because I think that this question might be asked or it might be in, in your thoughts about kids who aren't participating. And I think it's always important that the classes are three oh nine. If we don't get the three oh nine to go, well, then what? What do they do? And I think it's important to highlight that there are several kids who have made the decision, even though this option is there for them, to stay on and remain on co-op. Similar to last year, if kids have experienced the New York trip and don't feel as that this is something they want to do as a class, they will come to school. We do have day activities for them. Last year, they actually, we've worked with Mr. Evans, the academic coordinator, with a couple of people who are not proctored in the MCAS exams, and they'll go on day trips and it will still be educated. go on day trips, uh, and it will still be, uh, educational for them if they didn't feel that New York was for them. Um, again, I want to also highlight that we are, as a class, whether it be the officers, advisors, or the grade level administrator, um, we definitely are looking at senior activities to incorporate all three hundred and nine kids at the, at the conclusion of the year to give them another send-off, uh, because I think they deserve it, because it's a very special class to make, so I think they deserve as much as we can give them and do for them.
Just like to add that Cole Pearson's been a great class president, um, hasn't been easy. His constituents actually proposed a trip to J P, uh, in Canada, right?
Yeah.
Just on the Vermont side.
Yeah, right.
And so, uh, that was to a kind of a water park, and, um, we weren't comfortable with the trip administratively, and it lacked an educational component, and it lacked some of the safety and security aspects that we look for in a trip, and so, uh, we sent Cole back as, uh, fearless president to let him know, uh, his constituents know that that was a no-go. Uh, and, um, New York was actually the second trip, I believe, uh, on the, on the, the lineup, and so, uh, they went about retooling it, but it, the, the New York trip represents the educational component that we have valued, uh, and it's really been a, now it will be a tradition that we plan to keep with and stick with, uh, but it also has a lot of the safety elements and, and the aspects that basically we challenged Cole and his other officers and classmates to come up with, uh, that we would, uh, be able to come here. Uh, we've prepared for this for some time now, Frank, you and I, and St. Eric, your, your advisors, that we weren't going to come and present to you until it had checked all the boxes, uh, and then we felt good about this one.
We do.
So congratulations for surviving, uh, a good political test.
And it's still not good up to.
It is.
Does the chair like making motion to accept or approve?
Second.
Motion made, and second question, time of discussion.
I'd like to bring up the fact trying to get, um, higher number of students, um, are we around half, half the students? Do you have a feel for?
So right, so right now we're almost at the halfway point. So I think that, um, again, I sent the one call out tonight, I, I'm gonna, um, probably go and see some kids tomorrow, because again, what we're, what we're looking for, uh, from the initial, um, kind of proposal was a really high level, and again, over time, you know, the kids do forget, so we're gonna be making our way around tomorrow to be working with those families and calling those students down, seeing what their thoughts are, um, and hoping that, you know, because actually I met with a number of kids today, and they said, yeah, I just haven't gotten around to it.
Is there a minimum threshold we need to get to, to make the, the trip a go or not?
No. This is right now in comparison to last year, so we were at two hundred and thirty kids last year, so we're about sixty kids under that, which I think is okay, right? And I think that there's gonna be a handful of students tomorrow, of course, just like any kid last minute, they're gonna get their stuff in, uh, because I think that they have a high interest level of being together.
You get the, oh wait, does it deadline?
Right.
It is also possible to register after the deadline, so long as there's still spaces available on the buses, since our bus paying prices are based off of forty-five students per bus, there's, and the buses simply were, should be fifty-five, so these students of us actually back in the bit, so there is likely to still be space that students can still register in the space, that's, you have the option of a payment plan.
No, I, I was just saying, you know, trying to duck down later, obviously raising the bar, given that it's, you know, something new and fresh, and I'm sure you'll start to soon get more creative in the future years.
Mr. Hall, here's what I will tell you. Each year, and again, it's, it's healthy competition. When we started talking to Cole and his, uh, the other class officers, when we talk about last year as the, kind of the inaugural year of going out of state and overnight, each, I've noticed already talking to the current juniors, and the already sophomores at the ring ceremony, that each, they're starting to see what the class before them has done, and almost like they want to up their game. And I think that's very interesting, uh, and then again, it has to be well thought out, and one of the major points that we talked with Cole about and his classmates was about, um, the purpose. It's not just to go and have a great time just for the sake of having fun and going away, it does have to have an educational component to it, otherwise this isn't going to apply in this room, and certainly not going to apply in the pre, kind of the, the prep with Mr. Steele and myself.
No, and by, and by breaking, you know, now starting to do this a little bit, see, it's not just about the competition. When you've got sophomores thinking about it, or even freshmen, it can change your fundraising for four years, because if they want to do something bigger, they want to go do something more, the funding and the fundraising is gonna be a huge aspect, that's in all of them, so spend four years building instead of, you know, just two.
And also, I'm gonna speak to the sophomores that are on my cycle, you, you, you've already talked about, we talked about the ring ceremony, about the participation, they're wanting more and more, they're, they're hungry, they're interested in, in, in gaining more or having more for their class as a whole, so with Cole and his group, we, you can see they want to be together, they want to do a lot for their class, and it's starting to, you see it in the juniors and the sophomores already. The freshmen are new, they're just kind of, they're new and they just got to their, their first shops, uh, but I'm sure of that, and eagerness once they hear about it.
No, absolutely, that, that's why I was just thinking, you know, in also different cities, you know, experience, just the experience, like you're going to the museum, it's just amazing, I guess.
Uh, Cole, having gone to New York as a high school student, uh, I'd like to just caution you that when the street salesperson tells you it's a Rolex or Microsoft, it might not necessarily be from those.
I was looking at this like in May, there's no ballgame on here?
Yeah.
Certainly they brought somebody from somewhere.
We've talked about that too.
All right. We've got a motion on the table. Questions come to discussions, seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the senior class trip to New York. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Great job, thank you very much, Cole, Justin, and John.
Thank you.
I have one more trip for you to consider tonight, uh, it was a late comer, but it is in your packet, the painting and design shop trip, and I can find it myself in here. Mr. Brown. Mr. Uh, I believe a trade, is it?
We want to do the technology.
Yeah.
What's that?
Uh, I'll go for another. Hey, Mr. Bellin, you worked with Mrs. Lamont on this request, you want to tell us a little bit about this one?
Sure, so the curriculum down in women tech, uh, some of it coincides with what they do in painting and design and where they want to go is a shop, so they want to get some ideas, they're only, uh, have the kids get on there and get an idea of what majors they could possibly take at women tech, but also get ideas to re, uh, remodel the shop as well, so it's a twofold type of trip.
I'll make the motion. I'll second the table. I'll second it.
Motion made and second to approve the, uh, this trip all the way east around Rhode Island.
It's gonna take at least one, twenty minutes.
Yeah, just in discussion, uh, Mr. Lamont informed us, uh, earlier this week that the, his operation, the founder, has been featured in another magazine, and we'll get more specific on that. It continues to earn, excuse me, to earn a new recognition, uh, which encourages them to pursue.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Steele.
And that's my time. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
I was just gonna say, he's only forty, yeah, only fifty minutes late. It was Cole, he kept on. Budget Subcommittee, Ms. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, I will keep it brief. Uh, we are about, Merry Christmas, guys, um, we are about halfway through the process. Uh, so far, we have looked at, uh, the salary and wage and benefits, talking about, um, some of what's been threatened, well, most of it was contractual, we've started to look at the rates for the health insurance, we've looked at student and other school services, uh, plant operations and facilities, um, and administrative and fixed charges. Uh, so far the process has been great, I would like to say thank you to all of the department heads and the administrators that have presented thus far, um, they've brought very thoughtful proposed budgets to us, um, and, and trying to look at what is really, um, what our needs versus wants, uh, so the process continues, we meet again on January second, um, but so far, so good, because this is only the first pass through, um, so we will be looking at things later on in budget season and doing some tweaking. Mr. Finn, would you like to add?
No, I think you've captured pretty much the essence of it, uh, yes, this is normally the case, um, the numbers we have right now that have started to be assembled, uh, are higher than we all care of note, or note, and we will be carrying those down over time, uh, but we have had some lively dialogue on things that are necessary and things that we feel that, that may have to be pushed off based on a number of other factors that we had to consider forward, so I think so far things have been moving on very well under the leadership of Julie, and, uh, I feel pretty good to get this thing moving and wrapped up.
Thank you. Any questions? That's it, thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Dr. Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, item eleven point one. Uh, we, uh, have alerted committee members in preliminary conversation that, uh, we are planning our twenty-sixth annual superintendent's gourmet dinner, one of our major, uh, celebratory activities, uh, on Thursday, March nineteenth, people will still be recovering from St. Patrick's Day, but the gourmet dinner will proceed. I am alerted this year that the theme is Japan.
Are we going for us?
I don't usually get that information this early, but that is.
At least that's what they're calling you today.
So we do need to take a, yeah, that's, it's not nice to try to fool the superintendent. But anyway, um, the school committee needs to take a vote, uh, for the March nineteenth, uh, permission to have alcohol on premise, uh, in, in this particular case.
I'll make, I'll second.
Motion made and second, um, to allow a one-day alcohol permit, and, you know, as the reminder, as we're taking the vote, that all alcohol is served by the adults in the room, the kids have no contact with it, so I want to make sure that we have that in before we got to the, any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of supporting this request for a one-day alcohol permit, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, we will now submit depth to the board, so one person's decided to write a permit.
Thank you.
Item eleven point two, in typical fashion, we had a number of tours that occurred since the last time you gathered, we had the new executive director of the Blackstone Valley Educational Foundation, a person with a military background, Jason Matthews, uh, very bright and eager young man, uh, he was, uh, walking through for a tour, he came from, most familiar with, uh, you know, Blackstone Valley vocational entity, and we look forward to working with him and hope to return for other ventures. Any questions? Seeing none, moving on. Uh, the Rose family, um, which, uh, lost a family member, uh, made a considerable donation to the therapeutic courtyard, what somehow referred to as the outside spa area, in the sense of following students and staff, uh, that at any point needed, you know, fresh air or a bit of, you know, rough break, picking good weather, uh, the courtyard was totally redone, uh, and the finances for that were provided by the Rose family. Uh, we wanted to make sure the Rose family recognized we appreciated their donation, and the others that may have donated to the family on behalf of their loss, uh, and, and they came, uh, this was, it was quite a group of them, okay, about twenty of them, okay, they all came in, we were delighted to do that. They were very pleased, very moved, uh, and they're certainly nice people. Others, I believe, came from all over the United States just for this opportunity, so it was a, it was a very nice opportunity, and in better weather, we hope, you'll get a chance to see that area too. Any questions? Moving on. Mary Jane Handy, otherwise known as Handy Dandy to Curtis, uh, is a key person of the Department of Revenue, Bureau of Accounts, uh, someone who's worked in the district in resolving art issues in Upbridge, uh, and I think in Millville and possibly other places, uh, so she was no stranger to our district, she's no stranger to Blackstone Valley Tech, she is a frequent presenter at the Mass Association of Regional Schools and other groups. In any case, she called upon Curtis and myself to have a conversation, uh, with her relative to some needs that she sees relative to shortages and job, job opportunities, uh, and we were pleased to do that, so we had a working lunch, and, uh, the only thing I asked her in return is she would be kind enough to write her a letter of support, uh, to the Administration Finance, the neighboring division, on behalf of the four million dollars that's stuck there, uh, and so I, a letter has been submitted to her to see whether or not that is within her comfort zone, if you will, and so we'll see how that proceeds, she has, uh, hasn't had an opportunity to finalize that letter as of today. Any questions? Moving on. Uh, we traditionally hold a chief of police breakfast, and it was in this room, it was very well attended, uh, and, uh, representation from the police force throughout the valley came together, uh, and it was great to see that, and it's a, it reaffirms what I call the pot is in the process, uh, and they certainly had a full breakfast, okay, well done, so, uh, the Anthony, the, the leadership team were all present, and some of the support people were present, and I was able to join them as well, so, and that took place on the date indicated. Any questions? Seeing none, moving on. We have a number of financial donations which we continue to pursue, the Charles River Bank, uh, was kind enough in, in eleven point three, it's documented in the clerkage, uh, attachment, uh, with appreciation for the donation that they made, uh, within the level that they, uh, traditionally funded in the bank. It's a cash donation, so we generally haven't viewed these as, uh, like a gift item or, or vehicle donation or a tax option. Eleven point three B, uh, Hometown Bank, uh, stepped forward and responded to our request and provided a, a support donation of two thousand five hundred dollars, which is used to, um, from, for some marketing by the bank or credit union, on the vans that are used, uh, will be used in the next few days, uh, for, to deliver baskets, uh, to families that need, as well as some of the projects, so we're very appreciative, they've received thank you notes, we will also meet with these individuals to see if they want to fellow shoot by the van, and we will do that. Any questions? I believe our painting and decorating and auto tech department, uh, collision repair people are working to update the logos, uh, for the things, we do those in-house. Seeing no question, moving on. We have, eleven point four, you have a parent newsletter, uh, which is available for the review, um, between the online activities and the print materials, we continue to try to do our best to keep our families, uh, well informed, activities, uh, and candidates. Any questions? Seeing none, let me move forward.
All right. Next item on the agenda, new business, we have two notices, notifications of retirement, Doc.
We have, first one, four point one, it's seen, in a little note I made at the bottom, somehow in the copy and, it says, accepting with sincere best wishes, uh, John, always enjoy a positive relationship with our students, and that has somehow relationships that disappeared in the copy, okay, but that's, uh, what the Senate said, and I wish it very best, uh, and, uh, he gave proper notice. Any questions on that? Earlier today, I received, uh, a letter of advance notification from long-term, uh, manufacturing staff member, Dave Lewis, who was indicated his plan is to retire, and hopefully he will be able to return this up, uh, if called upon, and so that also was accepted. Dave's message, like many, indicates his appreciation for the support by the school committee and the district, uh, for his program. Twenty-seven years ago, the manufacturing department was tired when he called, and we had a choice to make, so we decided not to do that, we were very dependent upon surplus and excess property, much of it was leased to us, uh, it was outdated equipment, Donovan would be among those who knows that quite well, uh, it was very manual in its design, uh, it didn't accommodate the current skill need, and so we chose, many, several vocational schools like Tri-County down the road closed their program, but we decided not to do that, decided to work with advisory committees, uh, and to build it back, and, uh, Mr. Lewis has indicated his appreciation for non-abandoning ship of that program, it's surely come a long way, and as you saw from the interest of students, it continues to be more and more popular, uh, and we continue to acquire new equipment, uh, in non-tax appropriation. Any questions on that? Okay. Uh, item four point two, um, for some time I've been encouraging, uh, Jack McCarthy, the executive director of the Mass School Building Authority, to follow up the initial letter that he wrote, uh, to, in support of our request, uh, there was, there's an impression by Administration Finance that the money that is held up there is in the construction category, therefore it, it shouldn't come from that branch of government, it should come from the Mass School Building Authority. It should come from the Mass School Building Authority, same, same source that we draw on the roof of the university. And so we are doing our best to distinguish out, Mr. McCarthy, the executive director of that, saying he doesn't do that to be a conflict, uh, and would in fact support the release of that money. So, uh, if nothing else, the administration finance is discovering that we, maybe, we're persistent, let's say. That concludes my report on the new business.
Anyone else? Any school community members have any other new business to bring forward tonight? Dr. Fitzpatrick, do you have any other new business tonight?
Actually, I have two. Yeah, I had an opportunity, Joe, to go to a court of honor in Blackstone, sadly, uh, at, uh, at St. Paul, right, yeah, St. Paul, St. Paul's. Okay, uh, for Matthew Cobolino, a very nice young man. He constructed a handball court for the boys and girls of Blackstone. Did the layout, did the concrete work, and fully installed it. And, uh, the, the family was there. State Representative Soder was there, uh, and so was a select person, Vic. Okay, so I joined them and, uh, an opportunity to recognize this young man who's a student of Valley Tech, earning his Eagle Scout. The annual reports with your help have been distributed in most cases, uh, to the council halls. We very much appreciate that. And yesterday, former school committee member Ken Peterson had surgery. Okay, he's recovering today. Uh, this involved a repositioning of his lung. Okay, he had some interference, okay? You know, not a cancerous situation, uh, but he had some interference and had to be corrected. Uh, and so I, I alert you that he's home complaining.
Is that what that is on?
That's the message you got there.
That's the message.
That concludes us.
All right. Actually, I was just going to say, tonight I got the invitation to the nursing program, which is January 22nd, the week after, after the national equine meeting. And, you know, if you have the opportunity, I recommend you go. It's always a, a highlight event. You know, it's amazing to watch the families come up to support their new graduates after all the sacrifice they made. So if you have the opportunity, I do recommend going to that. I just want to go to the committee, as always available. Uh, we did have an additional, you were mentioning the painting and design earlier.
Yes, I, I, they were able, I didn't know they were able to capture this and add it to the distribution. But this is the newest magazine. I'm sure there'll be more. This guy doesn't, doesn't grow.
Our regularly scheduled school committee meeting is January 16th. Seeing as we have completed our agenda, I will entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Joe was quick on that one. Second? Second name, questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Didn't think so? Have a great holiday? We are adjourned.